And we're on. So, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 20th, 2016. And this is the regular meeting of the City of Daly City's Library Board of Trustees. So, this meeting is called to order. And let's all stand and pledge our allegiance to the flag. Our flag, our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Okay, so, let's...
Would you like a roll call?
Oh, yes, please.
Trustee Chubanka is not here. Trustee Das Magua. Trustee Ragasa.
Here.
Vice President Lex. President Encarnacion.
Okay, approval of the minutes is the next item on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that the minutes be approved.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, motion approved. So, let's get on with the director's report. And this is going to be, first item is the Summer Learning 2016. And this is the final report.
And it is my pleasure once again to introduce our Youth Services Librarian, Barbara Daniels, who has exciting news to report. And hopefully, the technology will cooperate and it'll be a good presentation. Take it away, Barbara.
Okay, perfect. So, I know I presented this in brief the last time we met, but now I have all the final numbers and everything will be good to go. So, we're looking at the overview of Daly City Public Library's Summer Learning 2016. So, as I said last time, what makes up summer learning? Joining summer learning, coming to programs at the libraries, participating weekly experience raffles, finishing summer learning, and coming to our summer learning VIP parties. So, these are the pictures as well of all of our different programs that we had, both DIY programs and performers that we had. Up on the right-hand corner, you'll see family who made their own picture books. And next to that, mobiles that we had. We also had a sewing a pouch for the plants, which is in the middle. And you can see, we had a dancing program at the bottom, and puppets, and a bubble man, and we had some pop-up Pokemon Go as well, which you'll see in the lower right-hand corner. Why is summer learning important? It's just some fun facts for you. Six weeks in the fall are spent relearning old material to make up for summer learning loss. Two to three hours per week during summer vacation is needed to prevent any learning loss. And the equivalent of one month of overall learning is lost after summer vacation. So, that just proves the point that summer learning is extremely important because we at the library are striving to prevent this summer learning loss that kids experience on break from school. So, this is just a recap of the outreach events that we had. I put a quote up there, and it says, "Outreach is a systemic attempt to provide services beyond conventional limits to particular segments of a community." So, as you can see, we really did target this year forty different places in the community where we could capture people's attention outside of the library. People come to the library a lot, we get those people that come in. But outreach is to be out there in the community, engaging people that do not walk through our doors, trying to get them to understand what we are doing and to participate with their children in summer learning. So, there's just some of the ones that we had up there. We had some really popular ones at the Saramonti Mall, the summer camps, the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, preschools. We went everywhere. So, in the middle, you will see our $1,000 scholarship raffle winner. Her name is Amina. She is a John Daly Library patron. She was the one winner, she's eleven years old, out of the 2,000, 200, or 2,027 raffle tickets. So, she was one name picked out of over 2,000 raffle tickets, and she was the winner. She's very excited about it. So, you will also see, over here, I have a listing of the weekly raffle tickets that we had for each location. This was provided entirely by San Mateo County Libraries and the Measurary Funding. We also received over 5,000 signup books and logs with great new graphics. And we also received three teen interns dedicated to Daly City. So, how do we make it work? We make it work with two grants, a Thelma-Dolger grant, and this year, we got the Read Zone grant to have our kickoff summer learning barbecue, and budgeted money from our operating budget. We have dedicated staff designing and hosting original DIY programs. We have marketing outreach and in-house library efforts. Three teen interns working 306 hours over the summer, and thirteen teen volunteers giving 142 hours of their time. So, these are our final numbers, summer learning by the numbers. Numbers of participants in summer learning, 6,143 youth, age zero to eighteen years old came in, participated, or we reached them outside of the library. They got a free book and a reading log. Number of participants to finish summer learning, 1,520. This number is huge. When you see our graphs compared to the rest of the years, this even went above what I thought it was going to be for this year. If you look it up in the numbers, it's about twenty-five, approximately twenty-five percent of the people that joined summer learning finished, which is a great number for us as well, higher than last year. And then, number of weekly raffle entries for those weekly prizes, those weekly experiences, was 3,870. So, this, these are the final numbers of where we finished, like where everyone else was in PLS. So, you can see, we're still, we were the last time I showed it, we still are, even with the finishing numbers. We're the third largest number of joiners to summer learning. We're behind Redwood City, who has four locations, and San Mateo County Library, who they have thirteen locations. So, their number that you see up there, that forty-one, is spread out between thirteen different libraries. So, you can see, our numbers are very large in comparison to even all of San Mateo County. So, these are our signups and completions with outreach included. Outreach obviously skews it because we had over 3,000 signups with outreach alone compared to the other locations. And this is without outreach, so you can get a better feel for how the different libraries did. This is signup from a seven-year comparison, so you can see how much higher our numbers are this year from any year previous. And this is a finishing year, seven-year comparison. We are pretty much almost doubled both categories this year, from any, from last year and any previous year. So, it's really amazing. And this is just the scale that you can see, both signups and finishing over the seven-year period, and just how much higher it is. There's a lot of reasons why it's higher, I think, this year. More outreach was done, but, I mean, the libraries in-house did an amazing job. All the libraries in-house, which you'll see when I go to their four-year, their seven-year comparisons, just between the libraries, they all, everyone did higher than last year. With the exception of Bay Shore, they were a little bit under, but their finishers were higher. So, everything was above and beyond. And you can, when I get to the separate branch statistics, I'll go over how incredibly some of them did. I included this, this is new from the last time I showed you guys. It is the age identifiers. So, I went ahead and calculated how many kids from age, you know, zero up to kindergarten and K through fifth, and sixth through twelfth graders participated. So, you can kind of see the percentages of what we're looking at here. Around the board, our K through fifth is the highest that we're doing, both in joiners and in finishers. Part of that could be because we go to all the elementary schools, and the, for the majority, they're K through fifth, we go to almost all of them. And also, when I did the outreach, I went out to the summer camps, and those were kindergartens first graders as well for finishers for those. So, these are the final seven-year comparisons. You can see, again, that almost all the libraries, with the exception of joiners for Bay Shore, were far exceeding the year before. John Daly, far, far exceeding, five times the joiners, four times the finishers. And as you can see at the bottom left-hand corner, Bay Shore's completions, their finishers, they were higher than, you know, three years ago. Really amazing for them. I mean, great job. Same for Westlake had the highest they've ever had, Saramonti had the highest they've ever had. I mean, just all across the board, everyone did. Programming, our final number came out to, for the attendance of all of our programs, is 2,136 youth, well, family, everybody who came to our programs, which is higher than the past, the previous years, which is really great. That's all the people that came to our performers, our DIY programs, everything throughout all the libraries. And we're just keep doing more programs. We had twenty-four this year, which is the highest that we've had of any previous year as well. So, positive community and library output. These are just some pictures from our parties that we had, super fun. We love going to the library, we were able to borrow new books and all the books we need in school, that's from the Bay Shore Library Party. Yes, we'll definitely try this at home with the kids and encourage more arts and crafts in the house because they had so much fun. Thank you all. That was from an attendee at our Shrinky Dinks at Saramonti Library. And then, the activity was marvelous, and the kids learned how to take care of their plants. Woo-hoo. Attendee at the Pots for Plants at John Daly Library. So, what happens after August 31st, or is happening? We will reevaluate the program from staff surveys and input. We got our staff surveys back. And look at attendance so that we can plan for summer learning 2017. I'm right now in the budgeting state, trying to figure out with our enormous numbers, how we can move forward and offer the same services and still give a book for every finisher, and trying to work all that out right now. So, we'll also have to evaluate more fiscal options for next year, given the monetary constraints of our new budget. So, knowing that the programming budget was decreased by seventy percent, almost seventy percent, we're definitely looking at more grant options, donations, things like that from outside of the community to try and ensure that we can offer the same types of services for next summer as we do this summer. We feel very strongly about it, as you all know. So, we're very proud of this summer, and we are only looking forward to doing the same and trying to offer the same for next year. The end.
Thank you, Barbara. I mean, obviously, the out, it's pretty obvious the outreach worked, you know, the numbers are there to prove that. I don't know if maybe later, if it's a good opportunity to bring it up with the DCPLA. I attended, I don't think it's the full board meeting, but I attended a meeting earlier this month. And one of the items that Susan is requesting from library staff is, you know, what are your funding needs? What are programs that need funding? So, the sooner that can be placed out there, the sooner DCPLA can work behind the scenes. So, I want to convey that. Also, I have just a follow-up questions in terms of, I don't know what slide this is, but it's the summer learning age identifiers. And it looks like it's, and it's where it breaks up the youth, the K to fifth graders. The outreach is, it looks like you reach 2,426 K through fifth. And those are because of the outreach to the Daly City Elementary Schools. These are Daly City Public School students.
For the major, a lot of them are, not all of them are, but a lot of them are, Daly City School students. The outreach in total is from everything I went out to do. So, those are summer camps, those are public school students, those are, you know, kids at the Saramonti Mall that are coming through.
The K to fifth is from all, kind of all those?
Yeah, so, to kind of explain how I figure out those numbers, I take a certain amount of books with me to each location of each type of age range that we kind of categorize them in. So, when I go out there, I have a number of how many I have of each age category, and then when I come back, I deduct, you know, how much we gave out from each age category to kind of give a general concept of how many kids were signing up from each range. Does that make, does that make sense? Yes?
Yeah. I just wonder if, you know, behind, did you gather any more kind of statistics in terms of, you know, where those students are in the, in the summer camps? Because I know in summer camps, they have to register through the, the login through Park and Rec.
Active.
Active, active play. Yeah. And so, if, do you have any...
So, when we have children join, we don't ask for any of that information. So, they literally, they get a log, that's their age range, and they get a book that they have their choosing of that age range as well. So, that's really the only way I have as an identifier to know how many I've given out. And I have breakouts according to each outreach event that I do. So, I have breakouts of how many were given out to the schools, how many go to the camps, how many have gone to everything. And these numbers are just a combination of all of them.
So, we're pretty sure it's in Daly City, kind of?
Every, every outreach event is in Daly City or Colma. So, never go outside of them to do outreach events. And the majority of them is at the school. But for the events that we do in the mall and, you know, some other places like that, we can't really, you know, tell either way that way. But we do the majority of our stuff, I mean, junior giants, schools, camps, all that stuff. Some majority, yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
And before we get off that topic, you notice on the charts, the huge increase over the last two years. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Barbara's contributions. We went all of those years without a Youth Services Librarian, without a Children's Librarian, and it's no coincidence that upon Barbara's arrival, things really turned up, especially for summer learning.
No, these, these numbers show it. I've been here for a number of years, and this is the best numbers I've seen. So, thank you, Barbara.
I mean, thank you. But a lot of the, I mean, a lot of this also goes to the branch managers who are at their libraries. I mean, as you can see, John Daly's numbers were quadrupled, like, I mean, far, far and above, yes.
And we'll tip our hat to Jessica Diaz, who's recently been to the branch manager position at John Daly. That was really a dramatic increase out there, and of course...
Yeah, and Westlake as well, their numbers have gone up a lot. And even, I mean, everybody's had, it's amazing. So, definitely...
Well, there's a need.
Team effort, but a good cap in.
Team effort, yes.
That's a good thing. Okay, so, next, where's my agenda here?
The next item is the Food for Fines program. And this is something we've done the last two years, correct?
Three.
Three years. So, this, this isn't a new concept, but one that we're looking for your endorsement so that we can bring it forward to the city council, if you concur. And in a nutshell, what it is, between Thanksgiving and December 31st, people can bring in non-perishable food items and have their penalties expunged. It's a good program. If there is a downside of it, it does create a little bit of loss of revenue at a time when we're really desperate for revenue. But otherwise, it's, it's something that brings some goodwill into the library and something that we would recommend going forward, but not without your support. So, if, if you concur, and we do have this as an action item, we would bring it forward to get a resolution in the city council to officially join several other libraries in San Mateo County that are participating again this holiday season.
I move that we enthusiastically endorse the continuation of the Food for Fines program.
I second that.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, that passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, trustees' report. So, we have for action is the endorsement of Measure K. And Bill, I'll call on you to kind of give us a brief overview about that.
Sure. In your packet, there's an impartial analysis of Measure K. One of the key parts of this analysis is the section, third paragraph down, three lines from the bottom, where it says, "Among the stated reasons for extending the sales tax is to maintain preschool, after-school, and library programs for children and teens." So, that's why we're here to talk about it. Measure K is an extension of Measure A. I don't know if you picked it up, but Barbara mentioned that the summer reading program or learning program is funded to a great degree, would you say, Chayla, by funds from Measure A?
So, the, the San Mateo County Library receives funds to coordinate system-wide elements of the program, and these include designing and printing the logs, which, you know, we pass out thousands of, and, and the books that the children get when they sign up, which is a big expense. So, it's significant.
So, just to provide a little more information, which is covered in paragraph two, in 2012, county voters approved Measure A, which created a one-half cent sales tax for a period of ten years. Measure K would extend that for an additional twenty years, which would provide a steady and confident stream of funding for the programs that are described by the impartial analysis. And also, if you're interested, I have a flyer here that's yes on K, and I'd be happy to share that with you. The Daly City Public Library Associates, at their previous meeting, voted to support or endorse Measure K, endorse support for Measure K, and I recommend that we do the same. So, with that in mind, I move that we endorse supporting Measure K.
I second.
All in favor?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I should have asked, are there any questions?
Sorry.
Okay, so, moving along here, trustees' report is, we're, I'm also requesting the endorsement of Quito. It's Quito Lost Things, which is going to be a literary, literary reading on October 15th at the Narcom Clubhouse at, at the, over at Lake Merced Boulevard. Essentially, all I'm requesting here is that we endorse this event. So, as you can see in your handout, right underneath the, the print there, there, it's sponsored by the Daly City Public Libraries, our endorsement would just be added on that line. So, with that, can I get a motion to approve the endorsement?
So, moved.
Absolutely.
All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on here. Announcements and communication. Bill, the report from the Daly City Public Library Associate.
Okay. Do you care to make any comments before I report on today's meeting in terms of your activity with DCPLA?
Sure. So, Susan Smith and I went, this was yesterday, we were over at the Daly City BART to solicit possible new recruits for the Daly City Public Library Associates. We were there from about five to 5:45, and I'm disappointed to say that we got a few glimpses, but nobody really came within, like, three feet of us. So, that didn't work. We'll be moving on to other things to see if we can, you know, increase the membership for DCPLA.
And in fact, membership was one of the first items discussed at today's meeting. And your experience at the BART station was mentioned, and people weren't too surprised in the sense that when people get off the train, they're usually headed somewhere and they want to get there. And you had a very, very...
We had candies out on the table, and still, nobody came.
Well, I, I know Susan really appreciated your interest in supporting DCPLA by tabling with her. Again, membership was discussed, a membership report was given, and there are a number of people who are members but need to renew their membership. So, if you are, and your membership is up, please do renew. If you're not, or if you don't know, you can check with Susan Brizzenfin-Smith, and she'll let you know what your status is. Let's see. A letter was presented, actually, a letter had been received, sent to DCPLA from Mayor Sal Torres, thanking the foundation for the check for the Westlake Program Space Grant. Also mentioned was the upcoming author's talk on Cara Black, which is this Saturday. Apparently, the signups are a little on the low side, so if you know of someone who might be interested in this, please pass the information along and, you know, consider coming yourself if your schedule permits. Also, was the Quito Lost Things Anthology of New Philippine Myths, which we just voted to endorse, was mentioned as an important upcoming event. The next item discussed was the Project Read Annual Trivia Contest, and DCPLA's participation in that. Everyone has a envelope describing the contest with entry forms and so on and so forth. So, this is a big event. As a matter of fact, if you haven't been, you know, it's bigger than you would possibly realize. People come from all over the county, people get serious about putting together trivia teams... all over the county. Uh, people get serious about putting together trivia teams, uh, to compete. Uh, so, a good time is had by all, uh, even if you don't get very far in the contest. There's also a dinner. Uh, it's a chance to meet people and network. So, again, if you, uh, can, it's something to attend either as a member of a team or as an individual. The grant applications for DCP LA were reviewed. Uh, there are several that are out and pending, although no definitive word has been, uh, given on the grants. Uh, in most cases, Susan felt that funding was a good possibility. So, we're looking forward to, uh, hearing from the people to which they've applied. A compliment was paid to Chayla, uh, for putting signage on the fish tank at the Westlake Library, recognizing that that is, uh, one of the items that is funded by T's, DCP LA funds, uh, that wouldn't be possible without their support. Uh, and my concluding bit of information is that the next board meeting will be in one month on Tuesday, October eighteenth, at eleven AM, location to be determined. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, no public comment? I think it's, any other comments from?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, uh, to sort of piggyback on what Joseph said about the Summer Reading Program and the leadership that we've had, uh, for the past two years. You know, the enthusiasm, uh, and organization and planning, I think, has been infectious. Uh, and I think it's been a spark that's inspired the branches to do the work that they've done. And, uh, you know, I think, um, everybody involved deserves a real pat on the back.
Yes. And please, please submit that request to DCP LA for programs that need funding.
Yes.
Can I, are, are we open for announcements or?
Announcements.
Okay, so, um, there's a couple that are going on. Um, one of my good friends, um, he just came out with a, a photo journal book about Filipinos in Daly City, Jeremy Velus. And he's gonna be having a talk at the Asian Art Museum, along with another artist, um, Jerome Reyes. And it's, um, it's this Thursday, and it's called, the event's called On Air, A Live Reading of Landmark, Gus in Daly City. Consists of a live conversation organized by the artist featuring photographer, educator, Jeremy Velus, and Dr. Don Mabalan from SF State. And they're just gonna be talking about, um, um, I guess, the influence of Filipinos in Daly City, and then all, some of his work, Jeremy's work. Um, and then also talking about, um, gentrification that's happening in Daly City. And then, so that segues to my next point. Uh, there's, there's another, um, event that's happening this Thursday as well, same day, same time. Sucks, I can't. Um, but it's for, Unite for an Affordable Daly City. And they have a town hall meeting, um, at Holy Child and Saint Mark, Martin's Episcopal Church, seven 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 Southgate Avenue at six PM. Um, and I think, just already seeing the numbers and how the need is out there and, um, what all these programs have done for all these youth and families, and for the budgets to be slashed the way it is. And I know it's, it's not just the libraries, but it's everybody else. Um, there has to be a way, way how to keep, uh, uh, Daly City affordable. Cause this is where I've, we've already mentioned it last meeting. I just recently moved over on top of the hill. Um, it's, it's getting ridiculous where working families can't even afford to live in a home in Daly City, or even buy. And it's, it's, it's getting, I don't know what we can do as a library to make a statement or to unite folks to make this an issue. Um, my daughter is also a student at Westlake School Performing Arts, and there's this talk about, um, serving that area, making that area into condos. And as a group that represents the libraries and represents families and youth, I don't know, I know Daly City's broke, but there has to be a way that we support our families and youth. So, um, I don't know what to, I just thought of it on the way back here. Um, I've, this city's been the longest tenured I've ever lived in, all the cities I've lived in throughout California. And I don't know. A lot of times, we always say to let the, um, let the market dictate what's best for us, but with people that have some sort of responsibility, I don't know what it'll take.
Look, Rod, I, uh, I'm an, an alternate delegate to the San Mateo County Democratic Central Committee, and we recently conducted interviews of people seeking the endorsement of the Democratic Central Committee. And one of the questions had to do with what are the significant problems that you're going to face, uh, in your role, whether it's City Councilperson or Board of Supervisors. And without exception, housing.
Yeah.
The cost of housing was seen as a significant problem, not only in the county, but throughout the region. And this is happening everywhere.
Yes.
In the Chronicle this morning, there was an article about restaurants being priced out of Minlo Park in Palo Alto because high-tech firms are buying up the space.
Right.
And they can't afford the rents. So, you know, this is really a serious issue. Uh, but, you know, far above our, our pay grade in a sense. But, you know, you've really identified something that is going to affect a lot of people.
I don't know, just a stream of conscience that I had driving over here after, uh, getting my security deposit back. And I'm just, yeah. And seeing a lot of my students going through this, myself going through this, it's like.
No, I see the demographic change, cause I live right by the Daly BART Station. And you just see the, the change in people.
Right.
It's, it's, yeah, it's gentrification is on, is on its way. They're all heading to top of the hill, cause that's where, that's where they walk from, from the BART Station up the hill. So, it's definitely a changing neighborhood.
And as brutal as it is, I, I do want to say, Daly City has been ahead of the curve. Uh, Daly City does have an inclusionary housing ordinance. Any new development has to set aside a certain percentage of affordable below market. Um, we've got more affordable housing built in Daly City than any city in the county, including what's about to open up at the top of the hill, at the Volkswagen. That's for extremely low-income qualifying. The problem is the demand and supply are out of whack. So, they're expecting thousands of applications for fifty-two units, well, fifty-one, because one's gonna be a, a resident manager. So, I, I don't know what the answer is, but it's not, Daly City's not doing anything. I mean, Daly City, if any city in San Mateo County, there's been more Habitat for Humanity buildings here than anywhere else, including the first, uh, ownership, extremely low-income, uh, condominium development on Mission Street. So, I know there's, there's, there's definitely work to be done. Um, there's, you know, the other challenge is there's very limited open space in Daly City. It's, it's built out, it's one of the most densely populated cities in the United States, number six out of cities of population one hundred thousand or more. Um, it's, it's a true dilemma, but.
There has to be some sort of rent control. I mean, it's not, you know, I mean, it's not in our jurisdiction to, to apply, but I'm just, this is awful, you know, and, I mean, if I didn't have the privilege of having three other people that are all professionals, we would've been gone. You know, so, I think it's something that we should take a position on or statement on or be working with, Unite for an Affordable Daly City. Because sooner or later, the, if we have these numbers without the budget, they'll be like, why, then why would they need more money for the libraries? They're doing this with less money. And we need to fund it, we should think of like the most utopian position for what the library should be. And I know we should be realistic about things, but in times of crisis, we also can't think of like shooting ourselves in the foot as well. And I, I know the, the pie is very, very small. But, there's something wrong when we live in one of the most wealthiest places. I'm not even just saying Bay Area, but California. It's like we're saying, we can't afford it. We're just being cheap as a whole state. You know, we have so much industry. We have Hollywood, we have Silicon Valley. And it's like, give us a break.
It's a complex issue. It's a complex issue. Uh, and what I would suggest is finding the groups and the organizations that are really focused on that issue and putting the energy and time and effort into those groups, rather than, you know, expecting us to try and take a stand because it's, you know, that's in a sense, not our job. We, we have a full-time job worrying about the libraries and trying to do our job for them here. Uh, so, I'm not trivial, trivializing, you know, your comments or your thoughts about us being involved as much as saying, you know, we're not where the impact is going to be made.
So, um, I feel you.
Yeah.
But, moving on, uh, for our agenda building for the next meeting, are there any suggestions or recommendations?
Some of the best ideas come up after we've adjourned, frankly. And so, I appreciate the fact that we can, you know, speak to you, communicate with you, Arlene, and ask that agenda items be placed on the agenda for the upcoming meeting, if that thought doesn't occur to us, you know, at this moment.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
Did you? Oh, did you have?
Sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Could you make an announcement?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, this is the Filipino-American History Month Celebration. Heard a lot of buzz about it on, uh, October eighth this year, from one to five PM at the Pacheli Event Center. And let's see, we've got some performances, vendors and information, and art showcase, showcase, and some food trucks. And these event, the event is provided by the state, the city of Daly City and the Filipino, uh, Bayan Nihan Resource Center. Awesome, and it's free. Yes.
And the library will be there, um, in the form of me and three teen volunteers doing arts and crafts. Come by.
Wonderful.
Anything else? So, with that, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any, all approved?
Aye.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.